Thanks AJ. I'm going to call the city council work session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillor Pitts.
Here.
Councillor Mo.
Here.
Councillor Rodley.
Here.
Councillor Stare.
Here.
Councillor Woodrow.
Here.
And Councillor Pishonary.
And we are expecting Councillor Pishonary to join us anytime. He is currently in transit to, I believe so. So we have three items tonight for a work session. First is the city council, our city manager's office community art update with Neil Ladotti.
Good evening. I'm just going to share my screen here. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The councillors that are in the council chamber should have a hard copy of this presentation if you want to follow along. So for the next few minutes, we're going to spend some time talking about the city manager's community art program. We're going to take a look back at some of the projects that the council approved, just to give a kind of some background to the newer folks and reminders to some of the councillors that have been on the council for a while. And we're going to look at some, also share some design elements that maybe hadn't been seen before, been a while, just to kind of give you some background on some of the behind the scenes work that happens. So, and then we'll look into the future a little bit as well. So the council approved the initiation of an art program in the city manager's office a little over a decade ago during the city's 125th anniversary. If you can remember downtown was different at that time and the council was looking for some ideas to bring art into the downtown in a way that would be inviting to visitors and families and bring some iconic elements to the downtown core. Art tourism is a word that we used around that time. There's just some examples of some of our fortunate, our fortune to have some of these installations find their way into brochures and magazines, kind of laying that path for visitors to come downtown. So I won't be talking about the stormwater art. That's an art or some of the art commissions projects. That's not under the city manager's purview. We're just going to focus on the art tourism piece. And then any questions you have, just let me know during the presentation and we can cover those. So if we go back a little bit, starting in 2010 for the city's anniversary, we did a lot of community outreach and the council and the community at the time were interested in welcome signs to replace the welcome signs we had originally. Initially, a budget was approved for signs at all the entryways, but some downturns in the economy led us to only be able to install one. We actually didn't have funding to even work with or vet an artist at the time. So we were able to connect with LTD who put some of the kind of historic art pieces in downtown. And I'm sorry, I'm Pioneer Parkway. And we worked with one of their artists who had already been vetted to develop the, the entryway sign that you see now in Springfield and kind of that top centerpiece is one of the initial designs that many people haven't seen, but that was kind of the initial discussion and thought on that one. So after 2010, when the recession kind of ended, we got back into more, hey, the council said do an official art program so we can start having some really specific art to bring people downtown. And so that's where the first piece of art came from, and that's the official Simpsons mural. We started working with 20th Century Fox and the folks from the Simpsons in 2007 during a movie event that the city participated in. But we kept in touch with them after that to see if there were things that we can maybe do, partnerships that we could work on. So we would often bring up partnership ideas. They'd always say no until we brought up the idea of a mural which we had put into the city manager's art plan. And they agreed to do that. So they connected us with the vice president of animation for Fox, who is Julius Prietay. And Julius worked with the city staff to put together a number of edits over a number of months. These are some of the initial edits that we've never really shared before. In the lower left-hand corner, you can see Matt Graining's specific notes on some of the more Springfield changes he wanted made to the final mural. So that mural was installed over three days. We were joined by Yardley Smith, who does the voice of Lisa. And I think you could see in the corner there, council president at the time, current mayor Van Gordon helped us with that event that day. About a thousand people came into downtown to see that install. It's still the most popular destination in Springfield, according to websites like TripAdvisor. The mural is one of the, is the only licensed by Matt Graining. And again, we installed that in 2014. So that was 2014. 2015, we did Springfield's Ken Keasy. And Keasy was a graduate of Springfield High School. He was voted most likely to succeed his senior year at Springfield High. But over the years, our partners at the City of Eugene and the University of Oregon celebrated his accomplishments. In Springfield, we tended to lose touch with Ken Keasy. And so we saw this as an opportunity to really bring back Springfield's Ken Keasy. We, if you kind of look in the top right-hand corner or the right picture, you'll see a photo that was taken by Ken Ted Tracinski. He is a popular 60s photographer. His family allowed us to use that photo and we just turned it for the piece of art that you see in downtown. We did a, we secured the Oddfellows Building where Planktown is now to, to install that mural. And we gave the, in the RFP, kind of an impossible, impossible task, which was tell Ken Keasy's entire Springfield story in just one snapshot. Make it look like someone's taking a picture of him, but you're telling the story. And artist Craig Ferrajamo came up with the final design. Again, like this, with the Simpsons, it's very important to us. We have the needed approvals for the work and make sure it was legitimate. So Ken's daughter Sunshine was part of the committee that approved the work. And has, and you can see Sunshine in the bottom right-hand photo here. And also Ken's mother and son were there. You could see Ken's mom seated in the bottom right-hand photo. Again, we had a couple thousand or about a thousand folks show up for that installation. Again, another popular stop when you're downtown. Outside of the downtown is the Gateway Flame. It's actually the Springfield Flame is the official name. And that was started really in the early 2000s. There were a group of business owners in Gateway that had come together to try to beautify the gateway entrance. And they, at the time, had an idea that to do flags over Springfield. They could never quite get that moving just because of many things, not because of their work. They worked very hard on it, but it was an ODOT piece of property at the time, a staging area. It's actually what it looked like at the time in the top photo. That was the entry to Springfield from Gateway. So the council asked the city to assist the, the business owners in that area that were meeting regularly to put something up. We talked to them about several ideas. They really liked our entryway sign and asked if we could connect with the artists that did that. So we did connect with Devon Lawrence Field. He put together a few designs based on their feedback, which was a beacon from the freeway to bring people into the gateway area. You'll see kind of an initial design on the bottom left there, and then the initial flame that the council and the committee chose. So Devon actually built the flame by hand. These are some photos that we took at the time. These were in his Oregon studio. He had very little help, but he put that together in 2016, installed in December. It was all Oregon crew that helped install that in about three and a half, four hours, including some of our operations staff. There is a phase two of the flame. We'll talk about that in just a second. The next piece in the city manager's art project was, or program was the Women Veterans Memorial. So in council had wanted to celebrate as part of the plan those who have served our country. And so we researched what kind of memorials are available around the country. And there was a, only a handful of memorials that celebrated women's service and even fewer celebrated women who had been in combat. So that was a direction that the council approved and we went in that direction. But before we could do that, we had to find a site for the memorial. And we thought the best site was where the Vietnam Veterans Memorial was at the time. And you can kind of see, let's see if I can, you can kind of see where the, that small wall is. There was really no ADA accessibility to that old site. And it had a small Vietnam veterans plaque in that area that was really hard to get to. So we worked with our great partners at Willamette Lane, that is Willamette Lane Park, and a group of veterans to come up with the plaza design, which you see now when you're out there, and that's at the bottom left of your screen. That was installed through funding from the city in Willamette Lane. And then the first art installation that went in was the replacement of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial. Does have all the names of folks in Lane County who lost their lives in Vietnam on the back. And that was a huge improvement from what they had prior. And then we started work on the Women's Memorial project. And started that in March. We had a meeting in City Hall with about 70 people to talk about this idea, which we thought would be universally accepted. It was not. There was a lot of folks who thought it wasn't needed. And there was some thought that the project wouldn't move forward. But the council asked to see what we could do to make sure it happened. And so we put together a group of female veterans, one from each branch of the military. You could see them in the top left-hand picture. Those are the women of the memorial, the Women Veterans team. And that is them before a game at the Eugene Emeralds Park on Women Veterans Memorial Day, which they did in honor of this project. Jana Sorenson, the second from the right throughout the first pitch. So they got a lot of support after that initial start. So we met with the ladies for 18 months and worked on what this project could look like. We were not getting, we were getting artists to come in and talk to them, but we weren't getting anyone who could articulate what the members of the committee wanted until Allison and Rip Coswell showed up and really listened as they talked through kind of their feelings and what they thought was missing and why they thought it was important. And one of the biggest challenges, which they didn't want one, they knew that one woman on a statue could not represent everyone. And so it was important to them that we found symbolistic way to do it. And so the lionesses are what women in combat are called. And so Allison and Rip came up with this lioness sculpture. You could see the, that's their first graphic design on the right. And then the bottom left is the lionesses in their studio, the, the clay formation. And then the bronze being cast at the bottom photo. And then Rip and his son and our operations staff installed that in 20, 2017. If you were out there at that event, it was raining so hard, it was hard to even hear, but it was a great event. The photos here, the top ones are from the event. The bottom is, at the time, Mayor Lundberg, also a Navy veteran meeting with General Deanne Williams in Washington DC. And that plaque from Springfield hangs in the Women's Memorial in Washington DC. We also won later, the next year, a State of Oregon Heritage Award for the process that the committee went through to get this done. So good, good process and good outcome. That we returned to the signs, and this was just before the pandemic. If you look at the top left, that was the former Thurston sign. That was just plywood. It was coming apart. Pretty unacceptable for folks as our first entryway. So we worked with Urban Lumber. Urban Lumber came up with several designs. The council liked the state park design, which you see at the bottom left. But they wanted some improvements. So you could see on the photo on the right, councillor Pishonary at the initial kind of in manufacturer of the sign. Councillor Woodrow also had some very specific suggestions, which the team used to make the final signs. You see the one in Thurston that went in moments before the pandemic started. And then just this last June, we installed the second one in Glenwood. So what's coming up? There's a smart reader mural scheduled for City Hall. Smart Reading is celebrating 30 years of community engagement, supporting early childhood literacy. I know several of our councillors participate in smart readers. They are, they have commissioned 10 murals throughout the state of Oregon. They reached out to us in September of last year. And we've had an agreement now to put a mural onto the north steps. You can see that picture on the right of City Hall. That's right by the library. This will be the only smart readers mural installed in Lane County. And it'll celebrate the realizing your full potential through reading, which is a smart readers slogan that they're using. It's currently install, scheduled for a Ju- July install. And it'll be a local artist, Bane Gardner, who I think lots of folks are familiar with, and he'll be doing that. And then just finishing up a couple of things coming up. So in the initial, the last plan, the council had approved and identified a welcome to Springfield mural for this building. This is the Fry and Rankin building. It may not be in your packet this particular slide, but this is the old Jim's Landing building that developers purchased and refurbished and now is a commercial and residential. We had thought about pushing the official install out to 2023 because of the pandemic. One of the things we had hoped to do was the mission vision values work that's going to happen, which was on schedule before the pandemic. We had planned to use the feedback from that work to put together a mural that works for Springfield. Obviously, that didn't happen. So we had thought about pushing it out. But we were made aware recently that the cameras for Oregon 22 Marathon will be facing that building for both the women's and men's marathon, opening Springfield up to a worldwide audience. And so we very quickly moved to design something and you'll see it here on the next slide that we can put as a temporary, almost billboard for folks that are viewing the marathon. We're proposing to move forward with a blue heron mural is what we're calling it at this point. Since we didn't have time for a process, we chose the herons since they can be seen minutes from City Hall in the Mill Race. And they're also very Springfield in their persistent and self-reliant ways. They are also focused. And as you could see on the left, they kind of go after opportunities when they have a chance. So we thought they'd be great ambassadors for the games. The artists that we used in a very, in very quick fashion, we got, we talked to them on June 1st. And the design is ready and they're ready to install. The artist is Chris Helmick, who focuses on place making installs and has worked at the Oregon Zoo. You could see his stuff at the Statue of Liberty, the Jefferson National Monument, Central Park. He's done stuff all over the country. We're hoping that the mural will be installed by old city artists probably in the next, starting next Thursday. And just going back to the building, the building's pretty challenging. We would love to have lots of time. We're only giving them four or five days to do it. It's 108 feet wide and two stories tall. There's several windows, electrical panels, different elevations of the building that we don't have adequate time to work through, but we think we've come up with something great that will allow us to either come back and replace this mural with something that's gone through more process, or when we have time to work through the electrical panels and things like that, we can add to it at some point. A couple of upcoming and potential projects, the Springfield Flame Phase Two, you could see a little bit of that in the top photo as development starts in the Gateway Corner. And that's in process. A second phase was always planned, which would have a seating wall that would say, welcome to Springfield, Oregon, and also allow for some seating elements where people can be near the flame and be near the commercial that is planned for that area. Also, the decorative crosswalks that council approved, they are ordered, they're in stock. We're hoping to get those installed this summer. We've had a lot of interest in doing some additions to the Veterans Memorial Plaza. Now, we have a couple of ideas to move something forward. Again, before the pandemic, Willamette Lane, the city and a group of veterans were working on moving something forward for World War II veterans. There's a mid Springfield sign that we had hoped to replace early in 2010. That sign is still there. It welcomes you as a gateway to the McKinsey. As everyone knows, we're not a gateway to anywhere. Once you're in Springfield, you're in a pretty good spot. You don't need to go. So we're looking at doing some sort of install for that. And then if council would like to see another four or five-year art plan, we're happy to start to put something together. So I know I spoke fast, but we didn't have a lot of time. But if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Are there any questions about the art program? Leonard?
Yeah, Neil, I just wanted to thank you for doing what you did on this welcome to Springfield mural. And it looks good. You put it together on very short notice and it looks up. I think it's going to be an asset to the city. Thanks.
Merrily.
Yes, just coincidentally, my cousins in Maryland happened to, happened to send me a picture of herons in the, in the Chesapeake Bay at the same time you were talking about this mural. So I was, I think the mural looks great. Considering the amount of time, I don't think anybody would even recognize that that was done on such short order. I think it looks, I think it's very impressive and I, knowing it's going to be on camera for quite a while. I, I think it's going to, I think it's going to look great and it's going to show up Springfield really well. I had an idea for the Veterans Plaza. I mentioned it to you earlier. I would love to see some kind of, some kind of project considered to commemorate the canine, military canine in some way, whether it be a commemorative bench or plaque or something. But I would like to see that combined with, with the other veteran commemoratives that are there. So it's something maybe to consider as we talk about and, and work with partners on it. So, but I, I think, I think I, I'm thrilled with the amount of art that I've seen happen in the time that I've lived here and I look for it even more. I think Springfield is an incredible place to be able to come and see everything that's here. Thank you. And thank you for all the hard work.
Damian?
Hi. First of all, Happy Father's Day to all the fathers out there. Anyway, I'm just curious if there's any plan to recognize other groups of people. For example, I mean, we do all these, you know, land acknowledgements, but there's nothing to acknowledge the presence of indigenous folks here in Springfield. And yeah, I'm just curious, like, what are we doing to step outside the box and honor other groups of people?
Councillor Pitts, that's a great question. I think we have some experience just with the, the women veterans who had not been recognized prior. One of the things as councillor Woodrow mentioned is the, I think the art that the council has approved has allowed for other artists to do more work downtown. And so you're seeing some incredible things. So we were able to assist, for example, with the, the mural that is on Mimos. It's one of the only Latinx murals in downtown Springfield. So we were able to help financially and then also help them find a spot. But that is a great suggestion, potentially if we were able to do another five-year art plan to really focus at least one of the projects on that.
Corey?
Um, yeah, I appreciate that because I also think all the things that you've done are great and would love to start thinking about what another five years would look like. And also in addition to, you know, how do we sort of embrace the diversity of Springfield, both past and future? Also, how do we move into other parts of the city? Which I'm sure I'm not the only one thinking that as well. How do we like, you know, move into, say, the Mohawk area? Or how do we move out there scenario? What else? But where else could we go? Hypothetically, how do we encourage more art? And maybe build that into the plan? Thank you.
All right. So I think we're getting a head nod around doing another five-year art plan and then come back to us with, you know, more information when we've got, when you've got it, because I think there's some good ideas floating around that can, that can help inform that. Did you need anything else?
No, thank you.
All right.
One thing for history, Springfield's horse down here in South Lake, University of Oregon School of Architecture, 1959. It was controversial at the time. I thought they were going to blow it up, but we still have it. It's art. It's a big deal.
Oh, the horse. The horse is interesting.
Pardon?
The horse is interesting.
Well, it's, it's actually been a similar Springfield for quite a while.
I, Steve, I gotta know, why is it controversial?
Art, art in 1959, I suppose any art is aren't controversial. So and it was in the news quite a bit. So.
Well, there you go. All right.
I think it's because people didn't like it. Like it just is a funky sort of modern design, right?
Well, that's art.
Yeah.
All right. Looks like the next item is the Eugene Springfield Fire Governance Update.
Yes, and I'll just share my screen again. Okay. So good evening again, Mayor and Council. Thank you again for your time. The purpose of this work session is to provide a brief informational update of the Eugene Springfield Fire Governance Review Panel process. We want to make sure that you are in the loop on the discussions and have the opportunity to ask questions and to start to process this information early on before we get even close to making a potential suggestion or selection in the next phase. Intern Chief Scott Cockram is joining me tonight and will be my partner. I don't know if he's, he's on here. I couldn't see him. And he'll be taking some of this presentation tonight. Also, councillors Mo and Rodley, along with our city manager Nancy Newton, serve as Springfield's rep on the review panel. They're here tonight. We'll have some time if councillors Rodley or Mo or Nancy Newton would like to make any comments later. And then additionally, I believe in the virtual audience, Eugene City Manager Sarah Mederi and Assistant City Manager Kristi Hammett are here with us. They've been excellent partners through all of the work that's happened so far. So what I will not be providing tonight are any recommendations, thoughts on specific ways forward, or any assumptions on where we might land. We're not there yet. The Governance Review Panel is just looking at every potential option. Some of those may not work for Springfield and we'll find that out as we continue to review. Again, this is just an opportunity to share and formulate thoughts and questions. Excuse me. Chief Cockram will run through much of the historical details during his timeline slide later in the presentation. However, I'd provide a quick primer. In July 2010, at the direction of our elected officials from both cities, the cities took preliminary steps towards a functional consolidation of the Eugene and Springfield Fire Departments. The goal was to improve service effectiveness as well as produce cost efficiencies by moving towards a metro fire service model. The can, the functional consolidation was not a full merger of the two departments, but a series of incremental and reversible, if needed, steps towards a full merger. So ESF is currently governed by both the cities of Eugene and Springfield within their city council, city manager structure. ESF works under the two government structure with separate, separate budgets controlled by each city, as you all know. And this partnership has proven to be beneficial to both communities over the last decade or so. The Eugene Springfield Fire Governance Review Panel was established in 2022 to elevate and identify the final phases of a consolidation of the two departments. This is potentially a three-phased approach. Let me go back one slide. Phase one would be an exploratory phase, exploration, education and information as part of that phase. The purpose of the phase is to learn as much as we can about the strengths, challenges and limitations of the current department structure. Phase two, if we're directed to move that, move forward to a phase two would be a plan development, consideration of options and potential direction. The purpose of this phase is to explore all of the options and whether they're legal, financial, or through a political lens, include a description of anticipated short and long-term considerations and then get stakeholder feedback. This phase would determine any path forward. And then phase three would be that path forward to be implementation of whatever decision is made. We have the Governance Review Panel. As I mentioned, the city of Springfield is represented by council- As I mentioned, the city of Springfield is represented by Counselors Rodley and Mo, our City Manager Nancy Newton. The city of Eugene by Counselors Mike Clark and Counselor Randy Grove. And Sarah Medary, the city of Eugene City Manager Scott Cockram, who'll join you in a second. As the interim fire chief is serving as the subject matter expert, but brings in management from throughout ESF. And then we've facilitated, we've been facilitated by Brenda Wilson, who's done a pretty incredible job of helping us pull all this together. And this is the group. As you could see, we have a relatively detailed webpage where you can find. All of the meetings, you can get all of the information that the Governance Review Panel gets. And this is, and you can get some information on the review panel. And again, the Governance Review Panel is there to establish and evaluate and identify next steps for the two departments. Okay, so the ideal outcomes as put together by the group, you can see them here on the screen. An operational, operational structure that provides sustainable funding and meets the growing needs of Eugene Springfield. Efficient and streamlined operations, addressing concerns of both cities and stakeholders, which has been an important discussion point. And that the path forward can be supported by both cities. We're trying to facilitate a broad and neutral evaluation of the governments, governance options, greater clarity and understanding. Of any alternative, we are definitely trying to educate stakeholders and. Give decision makers a firm foundation. And Counselors, I think you know this, but Counselor Mo, you should have also this packet if you have a, if you want to follow along. Yes, it's the second one there. That's it. On, and then just quickly, here's what we've gone through already. Meeting one was the Governance Review Panel Process. So that was outlining the scope of work. A timeline and an overview of ESF department history. Meeting two, which was March seventeenth, was staff presentations with fire operations, EMS and logistics. Meeting three later in March was. More fire staff presentation. So this was admin, finance, HR, and we. Received an overview of the current IGA. Meeting four was alternate governance models, part one. April twenty eighth was part two and we are. Getting ready for meeting six, which is potentially on June thirtieth. Which would involve the financial assessments, which are very interesting to everyone. We're just making sure that the consultant has the time they need to. Give us good data and information. So with this next slide, I'm going to turn it over to interim, interim chief Scott Cockram.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. First, let me start by thanking Councilmembers Rodley and Mo and the staff of Springfield. This process moving forward has been incredibly enlightening with great questions and we really appreciate them. And their participation to the level that they are. I'll get started. You have all seen this slide before, I think as early as last October, sometime in that frame, which was. Basically, the history of the created the functional consolidation. Back in two thousand seven, the two fire chiefs really are the ones that got together and sort of started looking at the two organizations and what their future is and what, how they were going to grow and provide services. To a growing foundation of an organization into the future between the two cities that border one another. At that time, the two cities really did not even do any border exchange at all. So units really didn't. Go past the freeway for one another during that timeframe. Just to give you some context, that was in two thousand seven. In my fire history, we started that kind of automatic aid. Work and consolidation, functional consolidation, all the way back in the mid eighties. So, so in my work is in the fire service, I've been through about twenty two different consolidations. So this was identified. Long ago as the best practice method of providing emergency services to a regional area. I'm gonna skip ahead quite a bit, but from two thousand seven to two thousand, basically two thousand fourteen. There was four amendments to this agreement. Each one of the amendments had basically had added a little bit more services that brought them a little bit further. Towards working as one single fire department. So it went from the battalion chiefs working and crossing boundaries and working within each area. To training and EMS joining together to provide a similar kind of training. To all the way up in two thousand fourteen, when all of the IFF members joined into one labor agreement and started working in. Firehouses across jurisdictional boundaries. So that's kind of the last, that was kind of the last big. IGA amendment was when all of the employees from the two different agencies began working together in. Firehouses across the, the metro area. So next slide. So what are the successes? The successes are the ones that were really identified in the original ESI report, ESCI report, which was. The two, the two agencies, even though they boundary one another. Did not have the same standard operating procedures, did not have the same equipment, did not have the same. CAD or computer aided dispatching systems that didn't. So they were completely different departments. So one department would have. A different type of hose and a different type of connection and a different kind of training. Even though they were really bound right with each other in the same boundary. So this really helped to. Identify that and create a standardized training and EMS system, standardized equipment, standardized fire engines, standardized terminology, methodology. And computer aided dispatching system. So it just created one team instead of two teams across the river from each other. It created one fire team, which is. Really the biggest improvement that that you could see the efficiencies. We created, they created one single training and recruitment center, hiring process, EMS system, so that they were using the same equipment, same protocols. Same training, same experiences. And the shared strengths that were brought together were because there's now a larger pool of employees that can go between. The two cities. So really both cities, I feel. Have an efficiency that was gained because instead of having. You know, a small number of employees, I think now Springfield has about ninety firefighters and Eugene, a couple hundred. Is instead of having those two separations, you have one larger pool of people to be able to move between those two agents, two cities. The same with resources. So if one city had a fire. It was easy to move other surge capacity over to the other side of the river to fill in. So we had a fire in Springfield not long ago. That was a double fatal fire. There was resources there from both cities. It also, it took a lot of resources to do that. So we were able to move up resources into the city of Springfield to be able to run. Additional calls for service while we were, were there. So in my opinion, basically everything that was determined to be a success or. What was going to improve the level of service has been achieved. So next, next slide. So what, what's the problems that we're having? Well. If this were easy, if what we're talking about today and the solution to this were easy. This would have been done a few years ago. We're, or at the beginning, the, this is a complicated, as Neil said earlier, this is a complicated political, social. It's a lot of different issues on this, financial that have to be weighted through to be able to get to the next step. The last movement that we made on this again was in two thousand fourteen, really. And it's because we've kind of run out of the best kind of easy solutions to. Function, continue to functionally consolidate. The next step that we have to move, make really has to do with employees. So the, the, one of the larger and administrative stuff. So one of the larger problems that we have is, I kind of look at all these circles as a universe of problems. So. We have employees from two different cities working in the same firehouse together. They have two different IT solutions. We have two payroll solutions. We have two budget solutions and money has to be accounted for and transferred back and forth between, you know, if. Overtime is being used in one city by Eugene employee in Springfield or vice versa, we have to be able to account for all of that. When we go out on, out of county fires, you're worried, wildland incidents, the reimbursements of those are complicated when they're between. Cities. The IT, the Fire Marshal's Office is different and solutions between the two cities are different.
Hey, chief, hang on a second.
Yep.
I'm, I'm just doing a time check and we're going to close to like looking at how many slides you've got left. I'm gonna.
I got a lot to say. So I'll, so anyway, what we're trying to do is get to the foundation of the future. We're hoping to move that forward. And I'll, I'll pass it on now back to Neil.
Thank you, chief. And Mayor, if, you know, we have the one slide that just talks about alternatives, but happy to pass it over to Counselor Rodley or Mo if you'd like.
And I don't know if Counselor Rodley or Mo, if you want to get into the first part of the conversation, I know that there's some folks that have some comments that they want to make. I'm letting you guys into the queue first, so this is your one chance.
What they need to say and then.
All right. Merrily.
I think what has happened so far in the different amendments or different things have been done, have complemented the combination. But I think there's a limit to what can be done. I know you're not looking for making a decision tonight or making a full recommendation. But I would like to suggest that a long, strong, hard look at the setup for MWMC is, is looked at. As far as an intergovernmental agency. I'm concerned about a district just because it puts it, it puts it in the lineup along with everybody else that's a district. And makes the taxing situation quite. Tenuous. And so I, I shy away from that, but I do like the setup that MWMC has. I will throw in my own opinion in watching things that have occurred and having heard, having heard historic situations. Over several decades, and that is that whatever the setup ends up being, I hope that it's equitable. And it does not end up being like a two to one situation where Eugene has twice the amount of power to make decisions that Springfield has. Because that has happened historically with other things and I, I don't want to see that happen. So I'd like to, I, I'm just expressing it. That it has happened in the past and I hope that we cannot, we can avoid having that happen in the future. So that does, I'll stop.
All right, Corey.
Thanks, Counselor Woodrow. I think that your thinking is very much aligned with how the other counselors and we've been chatting as we've been going through this process. Is trying to think how to both, you know, create a great service as part of it. An equitable experience and for the employees to feel supported and to make sure that both cities are getting what they need. And so how do we, as we keep saying, how do we sort of bring this over the finish line? And look at what's worked well and what is no longer working well. So I, I think your thinking feels very much in alignment with how we've been talking about it together. It's like. Starting, starting at the place of like, how do we either, whether it's like an intergovernmental agency or. What does that look like to bring it all together under one governance model in which both cities still maintain equal participation? So we've definitely, that's where the conversation has headed. And like everybody said, we're not in any place of where we're making the decision yet, because now we're sitting here waiting to like, look at the numbers. Because we've all talked about our dreams and the challenges and what does it look like? And then it really also comes down to like, how are we going to fund it? So what does that look like?
Leonard.
Thanks, Sean. I, I just wanted to follow up on what Counselor Rodley was saying. There is certainly an argument to be made that Eugene having more people. And presumably larger call volume would have a right to more say in the day to day governance and operation of the, of the department. But. The other side of that is the taxation and the tax burden and whether our taxpayers. Are paying based on a fifty, fifty fifty model or whether it's based on call volume as well. Could I get somebody to speak on that?
Counselor Stare, thank you for that question. I think we'll know more when the financial piece is. Completed and Moss Adams is the consultant working on that. Information now. We're hopeful by June thirtieth, we'll have some financial information that we could share.
So I've got, I've got a couple of questions and comments here. So that, I know we're at the stage where all alternatives are at the table and I, and I want to take the opportunity, like. I am concerned that the fire district alternative is on the table. And I would have a hard time supporting that. And that's strictly because of what the additional tax burden to the average Springfield voter would be. I don't hear that being sort of talked about when I talk to the Governance Committee portion, but I want to make it, make sort of clear that, you know, that. That one gives me deep pause about like whether or not that is even a good alternative to identify. I'm willing to give the Governance Committee a time to sort of run with it, talk about it, try to figure out what their best recommendation is. But I think we've all, like, most of this council has consistently said that, you know, they've got big questions if, if that, if the alternative comes back and the recommendation comes back to that. The other thing that I want to sort of call out, and maybe I've got a specific question. Attachment three, page one of one. Is everybody's favorite tool a SWAT? So is this, is this the governance structure or is this the fire, like the current fire department?
Mayor, the SWAT analysis that you see is a fire department analysis.
So I've got, I guess, two callouts and hopefully one, one addition. When you look down that threat list, there's a lot of sort of commentary about, you know, sort of history, politics. Egos, right? Like, and a lot of that are public perception. A lot of that I wouldn't categorize as an actual threat to the entity itself. And the reason why I'm calling this out, right, is because I think there's a little bit of noise in the conversation because we've been all collectively working on this for so long. But, you know, and it would be helpful to sort of just keep coming up to that. Coming up, looking for that actual, what that actual recommendation is. The one thing I see that's missing out of this that I feel like we've talked, you know, that we've brought up a couple of times. Is there's actually no, there's no discussion in the sort of weaknesses or threats about the lack of elected officials sort of. Direction, participation and fire policy, which I think is a major gap in the current structure. The other thing I want to call out here is that I think there's, there's also a big framework around the city manager relationship to the fire department. That has been sort of out there, you know, is worth sort of discussing in all of this. So when I think about outcomes that come through this, I think about. As a city, are we really directing fire policy and are we getting the fire department and fire needs and fire issues in front of us more? And are we setting up the day to day operations so that the city manager in conjunction with the part, her partner in Eugene. Are sort of showing up with a unified voice to, to direct the department. Now, that doesn't exclude, you know, a possible MWMC or a different model. Last thing I want to point out, and it's something that I've consistently had an issue within in the MOU. Hey, Nancy and Sarah get along great today. But the MOU, unless it's changed, and I'm willing to be corrected here, does not give our city managers say in who the fire chief actually is. And I think that is an important thing to sort of settle in whatever, whatever sort of governance structure that's going forward. Is that our city should get an equal say in who the fire chief is. And again, I'm going to point out that Nancy and Sarah have great relationships right now and it's all working out fine now, but that may not be the case long term. Joe?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. There's a lot of background noise behind me. I actually could not have seen it any better. That the way you put it is that I have some major consternation looking, even entertaining looking at the tax district because burden. Our taxpayers exactly what Counselor Woodrow said. And I think that, and I, what I didn't see on this report is, so what scenario is there? This plan going, it appears to be working fairly well. What part of it says, or is it differentiated? As if we keep going down this road, at what point will the fire department explode or implode? Where, where does it fail? Is there a fail point? And so what's driving the need for the change? So if there's, you know, other than. And so what's driving the need for the change? So if there's, you know, other than personal desires to get some things done, but I want to know is, is, how it's set up, is it going to fail the way it's set up? And if so, then, uh, I don't see the need to continue what we're doing right now. So, uh, again, Mary, you had some great, great comments and I agree with everyone. A few that I need to think about and have a lot of. So that's all I'm saying for right now. Thanks.
Cory?
Yeah, I just wanted to, and I think Neil pointed it out at the beginning. You should have copies of all the materials from all the meetings where we've like also all dug into that. Cause I think a lot of the things that you're saying are being said as well. And everybody's very concerned about, you know, not making this relationship dependent, right? It has to be, that's part of, that's part of policymaking is to make sure that we get this, um, in a way that's going to work regardless of who's sitting in what seats or who's sitting in our seats or all of that. So, so not that you have time, which is by Councilor Mo and I've been going to all those meetings, but all that stuff that you could, you dig into that and see that those conversations are part of it, which is why we landed at this place of like, and I would say that officially, all, all of the options are still on the table. And also if you were sitting in the, the room, you'd see that we're, some are sort of getting pushed to the very back burner depending on what happens, but I don't know, I don't know if Councilor Mo wants to add to that, but.
Steve.
I'm open to all options and we've studied them very carefully. But one thing is the bottom line to me, I want to see what it's going to cost us. What's going to cost Springfield taxpayers? It's going to cost more or less. And if they're going to accept it or not, because if they're not going to accept it, then we have to be modifying that or looking something different. And one thing I wanted to add here, um, two thousand and seven, it said that we did not exchange fire departments, but we had a mutual egg agreement at that time and it was formal or informal, but I always understood before that that Springfield or Eugene got in trouble, they would, you know, it helped cover it.
All right. So I think we get, we've given you guys a ton of feedback. I know we're going to get a ton of information. Cory and Steve, go keep doing good work and fill it.
But I'm really excited for the, for the packet to come out Thursday, because there are going to be lots of numbers, should be lots of numbers in it. I really want to go through those, because that's what I'm good at. That's what I want to see.
So Neil, Chief, we're going to get lots of time to sort of dig into this when the commu, committee recommendations sort of done, right?
Correct.
And we'll get an update, what, maybe fall or?
In, in, hopefully in September.
Okay.
Be able to come back and, um, provide that information.
Perfect. Thank you, guys. All right. Uh, next item looks like the Main Street facility plan.
Evening Mayor. Down here.
All right.
There it is. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Tom Boyer, Community Development. Back with Main Street for you. Last week, you provided us with, provided staff with some great input about information that you'd like to see and how that information could be displayed. Especially as a prod, as this project moves into an alternate planning phase. Tonight, we're here to talk with you a little bit about community engagement. I do want to note that later on your agenda, uh, the city attorney's office, the attorney Christina Kraz, uh, will talk you through a resolution, um, sort of taking the legal steps to move towards an alternative planning phase. Um, and also, um, including supplemental community engagement. But, um, so that's just the order of the agenda and I happen to be here first under work session. As we've, uh, think, thought about this, you know, and had some conversations. Uh, we have some ideas, a couple of ideas on what could form up a really good first step of supplemental community engagement, something that we could begin working on this summer and carry into the fall. And what we're essentially proposing is a series of listening sessions with key businesses and property owners, uh, to really hear them and document their concerns and issues into an issues log. That, that, uh, could be brought back along with part one, which is information that you, you'd like to see. Help inform that conversation, you know, later in the year about how to move forward. And I'm not talking about, um, selling an idea. I'm not talking about debating issues. You know, I'm not talking about defending the plan. I'm really talking about going in and listening and using inquiry to try to really hone in on what the key issues are, like at the curb line, for example, or onsite, uh, with some of these folks.
Tom, you want to hang on a second. Merrily, are you just getting in the queue early or do you want to jump in here? Uh, you're on mute.
I'm getting in the queue.
Okay, keep going, Tom.
Keep going. Okay. At any rate, uh, just trying to really get clear about what the particular issues are for the business, uh, for the geography, for the operation, for those kinds of things. Document those, bringing them back in a log. Also, uh, to be equitable, um, extending that same courtesy to the stakeholders list, to others who've already provided, uh, community input. Again, more focused on listening. Uh, these would be, uh, making sure that we picked up our underserved, uh, groups, um, in the corridor, the bike ped folks and, uh, and others. And so then, you know, while Steph is conducting, uh, listening and documenting and developing the information that council, uh, told us would be helpful and considering moving forward. There's kind of a little feedback process there and then we would develop all of that over this course of time later in the year, bring it back to you. And that would form a, I think, a good foundation for a direction on where to go and how to go into an alternative planning process. So that's really what I'm here, uh, uh, to present to you also, just as a reminder, um, prepping those notebooks uh, with a plan that, um, were pretty clear is not going to move forward. Uh, still it's contextual information, uh, it should still be helpful for you. Uh, we're going to try to, um, create an annotated index to the technical memorandum so that at a glance, you know, if I, if you want to find something, you can look down this list of nineteen tech memos and, and have a, a little bit of wayfinding about where to go to see what might be interesting. But again, just, um, making it clear that that the, the draft plan is just there for, uh, a reference point for you. It's not the plan that's under consideration, but still doing the notebooks and still getting that out for you. So really, uh, that's, that's what I've got. I'm assuming there may be, well, I actually know there will be questions. Let's just jump into that and get the conversation going.
Merrily.
Okay. Um, I've got a few things, um, after having my own thoughts and having some conversations. The first thing that I wanted to recommend is if you're looking at doing listening sessions, my recommendation is you do them by ward. If you look at Main Street, there are different situational, uh, segments on Main Street. And I think do, if, if you classify a listening session or a town hall according to the wards, I think you would be, you would, it would be smaller. They would be, yeah, they would be more receptive. You would have an opportunity to have good conversations and good input. And you would have them, uh, uh, even, even micro locally, to make a new term, but it's situational. I think it's important for people to feel comfortable and, and, um, I, maybe somebody that it wouldn't be comfortable being in conversation or wouldn't feel as relevant as somebody and near forty second street to have a conversation with somebody that's near sixty second. The relevance is different to that part of Main Street. So I think that doing it by ward would be, would be better. But those listening sessions, um, especially, and then that segues right into my next point, and that is, we're looking at Main Street in a linear way. We've looked at Main Street in a linear way for the last ten years that I've been involved in this. Imagine a drone up above and imagine that Wayne, Main Street is a spine. You've got Mohawk as one arm. You've got twenty eighth street as another arm. You've got Bob Straub as a leg. You've got one twenty sixth of the leg. It's the whole body. We can't just isolate Main Street in a linear way and not have the outlying streets, residences, companies, uh, whatever, not affected or not related. We know we want to do something with forty second street and it's traveled towards Marcola. And that may be a long time coming, but whatever's going on on forty second street has an effect on what happens on Main. So we can't isolate Main Street away from what's happening in the rest of the, the, uh, pieces that combine with what happens on Main Street. And two, we need to look at it from the standpoint that whatever traffic wise happens in those segments has an effect on traffic on Main Street. So if we only isolate, uh, safety measures on Main Street, we're neglecting the fact that, that the, some of the, um, uh, impetus of what, what is happening might be coming from those segments. So I think I would like at this point, considering the resolution that of, of later on, at this point, I would like to be able to take a full picture of the access and, and look at an overall picture as opposed to just the linear one that has been in front of us for the last several years. In a more, in a more formal way.
Merrily.
Uh huh.
Um, I, I don't mean to interrupt, but if you don't mind, could we tag Joe in? We literally, I have him for about three minutes and then
Oh, sure.
Come back to you.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Um, yeah, Merrily makes a lot of sense and, uh, Tom, I appreciate your relook. I appreciate you just going, okay, this is what it is and calling it for what it is. Uh, I am, as you know, where I stand, I made it very clear. Most sort of thing is that, um, we need to get everybody on board. I know there's going to be a hundred two outliers potentially, but we really need to get everybody aboard and Merrily was hitting it on the nail. I think we need to really hit social media and, and pay for boosts if we have to, to get all the people informed and on every venue that we find. And, uh, even, even solicit help from, from the, uh, uh, counselors and awards. Um, I, I do want to totally reach out and try to get people involved. So, uh, I'm very happy that you have your eyes open, your ears open. Let's do this, this.
All right. Th- thanks, Joe. Have a safe flight.
And I'm sorry, I, I do support the proclamation. I'm not sure if that can be official or not, but I support the proclamation. But I think there's enough people here to.
All right, back to Merrily.
Um, yeah, that was, I, like I said, looking at the overall picture and the connection of everything that is connected to Main Street besides just looking at it from a linear way. My last point was a twenty year timeline or however far out we're looking at the timeline on this to me seems too long. I think we need to shorten the timeline, even if it means bringing in what are, what the plan is or whatever, um, to, I, I would like to see a long-term vision, but I would love to see it in maybe five-year increments. I realize five years is very short for getting something actually done or accomplished. But it doesn't mean we can't revisit it in five years that says, where are we? Does, is this still relevant? Does this still apply? Um, has there been any changes to our way of thinking, our way of looking at it? But I think revisiting it every five years, unless something comes up that we need to revisit it. You know, otherwise, but I think of a five-year plan of, of incremental revisits would be good. Um, and I'll, I'll quit there for the moment.
Uh, Damian, and then we'll come back to Cory.
Hi, um, just two questions. So you mentioned something about key, uh, excuse me for not remembering the exact phrasing, but you mentioned something about key people or key business owners or something like that. I'm curious, how do you define key? To, I, 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 I would wonder like, how intentional are you going to be to solicit information of different types of businesses, different race, gender, age, whatever. So you can have a more holistic picture versus speaking to certain people, because honestly, when I hear key, I think about those who have power, those who have longevity. And when we've seen it multiple times, those are the people that are preventing positive progress and, and I just, I don't want that to be the case.
Yeah, okay. Well, um, I could take one more set of questions and then go back through and answer or?
I, I think for Damian.
Answer directly.
Yeah, and.
And it covers both actually. So, um, yeah, the, and I, and I apologize, Councilor Woodrow, uh, when I, when we talked about listing sessions, we were talking about meeting with specific business owners, looking at their frontages with them and talking with them about their needs and documenting that rather than, than a sort of this town hall, come and tell us what you think kind of approach. You know, how we figure those out, Counselor Pitts? My thought was that we could work with the mayor and with Councilor Woodrow over break and try to identify the representative business owners. Who, uh, you know, one's freight, um, one's a destination, one's a pass by, just kind of try to get them categorized and come up with more of a representative group to speak to on the corridor rather than to speak with everyone. And that's, uh, mainly to, um, to take advantage of a fairly limited amount of staff availability that we have and managing other priorities. Uh, but to streamline and to try to get to what is the specific interest? I, I really like the idea about doing it as wards and doing it in segments because the segments aren't the same. So maybe, but there are clearly more than three segments in the corridor. So using the segments as, as a concept and the type of businesses that, that are there and really trying to, to get that representative, uh, business interest into the mix. So that's how we were looking at it from what we think we can pull off. Just to be brutally honest about it.
Cory?
Okay. So first, and I'm, I'm going to jump onto a few other things that were said, but first I just want to take a moment. And, and just acknowledge all of the work that has gone into this so far and how many years. I mean, some staff have, that's been a big part of their job or their only job the entire time they've worked for Springfield. And just to acknowledge that and know that, that the fact that we're not there yet is a little bit painful and a little bit hard and a little bit disheartening. And just, I just want to acknowledge that and say that in no way does this mean that we don't appreciate, or at least I don't appreciate all of that hard work and that professionalism and the collaboration and all that stuff that's happened so far. It's just, things change and communities change and things evolved and we're just not quite there yet. And so we just all have to kind of take a deep breath, say, we've done great work. It just isn't quite the work for this project yet. So I just wanted to take a moment and say that, because I don't think we have done that as we're all feeling sort of the angst of it. And then, um, and Damian can sort of, I don't know, throw a shoe at me across the thing, but I think part of when, when he's asked his question, it was part of what my question is in that we, we are very much centering property owners and business owners, which is not necessarily centering safety. So just sort of looping back to like, this was supposed to be a safety plan and investment in infrastructure so that we have, you know, safer ways for people to get through that corridor. And if we, and again, Damian can throw a shoe at me, but if we are centering those voices, we are, we are not creating an open environment for other people. So as we think about, and, and I appreciate Councilor Woodrow talking about wards, but I think we can also think about just sort of affinity groups in a different way. Like, how do we create a space where people who use mobility devices or people who have would live in an area if it was a safer place and they could get their kids to school. It's like, I think there's, there's some work for us to do around that. And Damian can say, no, that's not what I meant, but that's what I mean. It's like, how do we really sort of kind of tear apart the, the power and not, which is, it's hard to do when you're talking about a city and you're talking about infrastructures to, to center. Which is, it's hard to do when you're talking about a city and you're talking about infrastructures to, to center the, the owners and the property owners. How do we not center that? And then the other piece I had to say is super practical and it's gonna be really boring, but I was in it, going through a community. And they were working this, over this, the weekend and they actually had signs. I don't know if we do that. They had signs saying, this is a. Area we're doing blah, blah, blah at. If you have thoughts and concerns or you want to share about this. Here's where you contact it. And they had them like in periodic places along the corridor of this. And so it's a way that just, I don't know how, I don't think it's a cheap way maybe to just invite anybody who's using that. That might not be reached in other ways to know where they can just share their information and in a really visual way. Those are my three pieces. Thank you.
All right, Merrily.
Well, I'm gonna stick up for the businesses again. They're, they're on Main Street and part of what, um, part of what we have to deal with is we. We need to be business friendly as well as community friendly. One of the ideas I had way back when was, we can't just, again, can't we, we can't be just linear. We, we should have gone one or two blocks north and south of Main Street to include them in the conversation. Whatever we find in those couple of blocks, whether we find a business, whether we find a residence. Whatever we find in those couple of blocks, north and south of Main Street should have been involved in the conversation. I don't believe that they were. Um, one comment back or response back to, to Tom is. The reason I commented, the reason I suggested involving everyone along Main Street by, and I, I think by ward is the way to do it. Because that's how people, that's how people. Feel a unity, a sense of community, um, in our, right, so far, um. Is because we, over this last few years, there has been a, a sense of mistrust. That has evolved about Main Street, what's happening with Main Street, what's being done, what's being talked about. And we need to get that back. And part of that, part of getting that back and part of bringing a sense of trust back in as to. The community believing we're listening, the pu, the community believing we're paying attention. We're paying attention and I agree with, with Counselor Rodley when it comes to, um, you know, making it accessible and making it safe. And I've long been a, an advocate of making sure that somebody who has limited ability to have access to something. Gets better access. But I think it needs to be a combination. They need to feel we're listening instead of coming out and telling them what's gonna happen. They need to feel we're responding, we're listening and we understand their angst. We want to hear what their angst is because we want to be able to, to come to a point of where. I mean, the, at the end of all this is a yes. We don't know what that yes is. We don't know what, how it, how it's gonna turn out and what, what form it's going to have. But the best end result is gonna be where everybody sits there and says, you know what? Maybe I only got seventy-five percent of what I was hoping for, but I'm okay and I can agree to the yes. And that's what we're looking for and we don't want to leave anybody out. And I just, I, I feel like it may be repetitive and it may be something where we go back and have to do something over. Um, but I think it's really important. Um, if we're gonna get the community and everybody behind this. I just see that as being really, really, um, that valid and very, very important.
Okay, so, um, I've got a couple of questions here. So one of the, I think one of the questions that I've got is how, we've got a pretty complex sort of communication site. Website in the, that Springfield Main Street place. And one of the, one of my goals here is to sort of drive clarity. Right? And knowing that we're, we're sort of throwing a lot at you guys from a staff perspective. But how does that website sort of get updated to sort of reflect the new reality so that we're always casting, hey, here's the plan?
So, uh, I mean, it gets updated, right? And that's sort of the short answer. I know that, um. Laurlyn, uh, Spiro and, and Amber Fawcett are working on that already and have started talking about it. So it's really a, uh. You know, it's, it's resources and priority. I'm fairly certain we can bring that to bear in this case. Um, how we, you know, nest or differentiate or front page, you know, they're the communication pros. And I'd like to see what they come up with because I would do it wrong. I'm. So that's, you know, yeah, on our minds.
Um, and I think, uh, a concept here, right, is, right, really what I'm going for and from the communication plan is clarity, right? This thing is so big and then so complex that getting to whatever we're, we're going on from this point on. It's gotta be clear to all the stakeholders what's actually happening. Um, because I think that is one of the core, um, tenants to how do we actually move forward? Um, the other, I think, piece that when we go out and do these listening sessions and I, and, and I think that the listening sessions are a good idea. We need to really be open to the fact that we're not really litigating or taking, taking. Um, answers about what the nine roundabout median plan is because effectively that thing's dead tonight. And we're really talking about what is the plan being and what, you know, how do we necessarily go forward with a cohesive vision for me? Like for, for Main Street. And so I, you know, I'm saying this partially for the staff, but partially for the folks that are, you know, are potentially participating in those. Um, uh, sessions is really that the question is, how do we work towards a yes where we have a cohesive plan? Where, where we know how to move, uh, move forward. The, um, I think we need to release whatever that, it like, we know some of the issues now, right? We know some of, you know, we need to get a calendar and we need to sort of summarize the work, um, that the council has sort of done as we've. Talked through this the first couple of times so that we're again transmitting that sense of clarity out to the public that says, okay. When we go into this, you know, this is the direction we're thinking. What do you guys, what, what do you guys think? The portion that, um, that I, I think a twenty-year plan's too long, right? Like I think Merrily brought that up, Damian may have brought that up too, is getting to a clear vision maybe five to ten years. And a contingent role that says, we need to, at, at ten years, we're gonna come back with and, and do this again, refresh it. Some sort of agreement that says, this is not the, this is not the plan for the rest of our lives, but we're constantly sort of. Uh, sort of filling that in. And, uh. The, the other note that I really think is important is the right foot here is really listening to where folks are at. Um, and, you know, Cory made that interesting comment about the importance of getting more, like a lot of feedback, right? And I want to make sure, like, there's nobody that I've talked to that likes this plan, right? Like that, and that goes from business owners all the way through renters, all the way through bike and ped folks, right? And so, you know, I think acknowledging that, 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 you know, we didn't get it right for a lot of the stakeholders. Is an important way to open up the conversation and go, okay, how do we go forward? A couple of other things that are valuable to point out. The, when you really read the community feedback about this, it is really sort of not like. The, the quarter seven miles long and there's an ask in the community to treat the regions in the area for, with the uniqueness that, you know, they do business with every single day. I think it's really important to start the conversation, knowing that, that we're not really looking to take one size. And paint it across seven miles, but instead look at four to five areas and break them up in a way that makes some sort of sense. And talk about what do people in those areas uniquely need, you know, out, out of this plan. And, you know, to me, that means like, let's start, let's start with the, uh, you know, the one ask that. That we see out of a lot of business folks is just to start, can we fit it into the constrained corridor that exists today? That doesn't mean, and I've been thinking about, how do you balance those two things, right? On one hand, right, let's shy away from finding an application that goes seven miles. But we still, I've talked to business folks that have, you know, going, okay, if we work on this individual intersection, right? We may need to turn lane or we may need to bus turnout or we need to do individual work. And I sort of bring out the with is a way to illustrate the need to say. No, you know, that seven miles, paint with a broad brush, isn't the direction that we're going. And that we need to come back and really talk, you know, talk, you know, in individual regions. And I think that same thing goes for medians and roundabouts as well, right? Let's make sure that we're walking into this saying that like, there are probably places on Main Street that need a median. Not every place on Main Street needs a median. And I think that same conversation goes, goes about the roundabouts too, right? Like. There, there's a moment here to kind of put our hands in the middle and say, hey, when we, when we say we don't want to do nine roundabouts, that doesn't mean we want to do eight roundabouts either. Right? Like there, there may be a sight in there that is, you know, I've heard people point to what, you know. One intersection where they're going, hey, if you did a roundabout, right? Like it's the Bob Straub intersection. So I, I'm, I'm sort of giving you feedback to sort of balance the two instincts that I have that says, hey, as we listen. Where my head is, is that sort of area-based, you know, let, let's, let's deal with folks with where they're at. And then sort of shy away from the across eight miles, right? This will be the new facts of life.
Yeah, I, I'm not proposing to bring any facts of life to the listening sessions. But, um, you know, in a, in exploring for clarity, which that a conversation's important to get there. Um, you know, bringing, bringing in to that, the mix of. The various sections and what might be practical or impractical and the rest of that, I think it'll be useful.
Yeah. All right, uh, any other questions or concerns to come out? Do you, do you need specific sort of suggestions on? Uh, folks to have listening sessions with, or is that something you're gonna come back to the governance committee with?
I would prefer to come back to the government committee for that. I know, you know, you have a whole bunch more stuff on the agenda and that could be a. Long conversation. So, uh, but I'm confident that you can, you know, the governance team can represent the council and. Point us in the right direction.
Okay, and so our, there's no Main Street, uh, uh, topic next week. We're gonna get the material. Our, our summer assignment is to read and think about, you know, where we want to go. And then you'll give us an update with what you've heard, you know, in the fall time.
Yeah, and whatever we've been able to develop for answers and then all of that just sort of forms the foundation for the relaunch.
Yep, perfect.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, Tom, you earned extra points. You got us back on time. That is our last work session item. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn us until seven o'clock and then we'll pick up the regular session. All right. Oh, I brought, I brought the cowbell for world championship. I'm gonna call the city council, uh, regular session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Counselor Pitts.
Here.
Counselor Mo.
Here.
Counselor Rodley.
Here.
Counselor Stare.
Here.
That's a Woodrow.
Here.
Counselor Pictionary.
All right, Counselor Pictionary is excused. He's traveling. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God.
As we begin our meeting tonight, I would like you to, I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute. Until you call, are called to provide public testimony. There are two times designated for public testimony this evening under public hearings and business from the audience. If you are attending in person, please complete the request to speak card located at the entrance of the council chambers and give it to the city recorder. If you're joining us online with a tablet, smartphone or computer and wish to speak either of those times, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. The order of the public testimony is as follows. Anyone in person in the council chambers. Anyone who has raised their virtual hand. And Neil, could you tell us how many people are joining us this evening?
Mayor, looks like about twenty-eight online and seventeen here in the council chambers.
All right, first item, please.
First item is the consent calendar.
Make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Mo and seconded by Counselor Rodley. Um, Neil, could you call the, uh, vote, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
Aye.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Aye.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
Counselor Pictionary.
Motion passes, five yeses, zero noes and one absent. Next item, please.
Mayor, you have four public hearings tonight. Public hearing number one is a fiscal year twenty-two supplemental budget for an appropriations transfer. This is resolution number three, a resolution adjusting resources and requirements in the following funds. General, street, special revenue, room tax, fire, local option levy, street capital. Sanitary sewer operations, regional wastewater, ambulance, storm drainage operations, vehicle and equipment. And authorizing the transfer of appropriations within the general fund from contingency expense to human resources. Legal services and development and public works operating expense. Neil Obringer is here for the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, this is the fourth and final supplemental budget of FY twenty-two. Uh, in the CBM tonight, staff have summarized the proposed changes. Um, that would, that may be of note to the council, uh, or maybe of interest. And then all of the proposed changes are described, uh, within exhibit A of the resolution. I won't go into any of those, uh, you know, tonight unless, uh, the council or the mayor have, have questions and at which point I'm. Happy to, uh, uh, go into any detail that you'd like. Um, so at this point, staff are requesting that the council hold a public hearing and take action on this item. All right, are there any questions about this item? Leonard.
Thanks. Um, Neil, the proposed amendments to the budget are the ones previously discussed. And there are no new items that we, um, that we haven't discussed. Is that correct?
So the, uh, the proposed changes, uh, uh. Which, this is all within FY twenty-two. The changes that, uh, you may be mentioning were the changes to the FY twenty-three proposed budget. Um, which would have been processed through a separate conversation, but correct me if, if I'm misunderstanding.
Uh, you, you may not be misunderstanding. That was my question. Okay, so in other words, these changes are changes that have been previously. That have, uh, been previously approved?
No, they, this is the first time that these, uh, proposed changes are, uh, being, uh, reviewed and, uh, uh, by the council.
All right, let me go back and take a look, yeah.
And if you'd like, I can, uh, give a, a brief summary of the, the items in the CBM of note. Um, in the general fund and the ambulance fund, uh, these two items, uh, we have about, uh. Two hundred and sixty-five thousand in the general fund and two hundred and twenty thousand in the ambulance fund. Uh, both responding to, um, overtime costs, um, that were impacting the fire department that were more than anticipated. Uh, in the street fund, we have about sixty thousand dollars in contractual services related to the Main Street, uh, safety project. Um, in the special revenue fund two oh four, we have several different. Um, ARPA and, uh, other grant, uh, revenues that are being received in. Um, we have, uh, million dollars related to the warming center at Evers, Ebert Methodist. Uh, a project for habit, uh, for, at Fisher Village, uh, with Habitat for Humanity. And, uh, related to a backup fan for cahoots. We have four hundred and forty-five thousand related to a bridge loan, uh, for a project, uh, related to manufactured home park at Filbert Grove. And six hundred and twenty thousand, uh, related to a project, uh, with Anne's Heart, uh, for a new women's shelter. In the TRT fund, we have, uh, recognition of better than anticipated revenues in that fund. Uh, so we're increasing the transfer to the general fund, uh, and increasing reserves in the TRT fund. In the ambulance fund, we're, uh, responding to, uh, uh, additional, uh, GEMT or ground emergency medical transport. Uh, revenues, uh, revenues that are greater than anticipated. And then finally in seven thirteen, our vehicle and equipment replacement fund, uh, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Related to, um, basically the final costs associated with implementation of the, uh, city. related to, um, basically the final costs associated with implementation of the, uh, citywide, uh, phone system replacement.
So, okay. I, it's my turn to apologize because I thought that all of these amendments had been previously discussed. That, that's all I need. Thanks.
And I want to recognize that, uh, there's the last money for the phone system after all these years and we're so glad that it's done. All right. Any other questions? I'm going to open the public hearing. I have no cards for this item. Um, so I'm going to, Neil, do we have anybody raising their hand for this item?
Uh, Mayor, no hands for this item.
I will close the public hearing and accept a motion.
Make a motion that we adopt resolution number three.
I second that.
Okay, Neil, could you call the roll?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
Aye.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Aye.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary.
All right. Motion passes five yeses, zero nos, one absent. Next item, please.
Uh, public hearing number two is fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-two, three city budget adoption. This is resolution number four, a resolution adopting the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three city of Springfield budget, making appropriations and imposing and categorizing the taxes. Nathan Bell is here for the staff report.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, on the evening of, our evenings of April twenty-sixth, May third and May tenth, uh, the budget committee, uh, met to consider and recommend, um, a budget, uh, to the council. Um, the resolution exhibit in front of you this evening is such budget. Uh, staff is requesting that you, uh, conduct a public hearing and take action on this item.
All right. Are there any questions about the proposed budget? Uh, I'm going to open the public hearing. I don't have any cards for this item. Uh, from in the room, Neil, is there anybody wanting, wishing to speak from the audience?
Mayor, no hands on this item.
All right. I will close the public hearing.
They make a motion to be adopt resolution number four.
Second, I feel like I'm Joe.
You are Joe today.
Joe Junior.
Neil, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
Aye.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Aye.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary.
All right. Motion passes five yeses, zero nos, one absent. Next item, please.
Next item is the third public hearing, a resolution certifying the city's eligibility to receive state shared revenue from cigarette, marijuana, gas and liquor taxes. This is resolution number five, a resolution certifying eligibility for state shared revenues from cigarette, marijuana, gas and liquor taxes, approving the city of Springfield's participation in the state revenue share, sharing program, and declaring the city's election to receive state revenues pursuant to Oregon revised statutes, two-two-one-point-seven-six-zero and two-two-one-point-seven-seven-zero. Neil Obringer is here for the staff report.
Good evening, uh, again, um, as we do, uh, each year about this time, uh, the council is asked to hold a public hearing and certify the city's eligibility to receive state shared revenues. Um, staff ask tonight that the council hold a public hearing, um, and act on the attached resolution. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions. Are there any questions about state shared revenues? I am going to open the public hearing. I don't have any cards for this item. Neil, do you have anybody online that wishes to speak to this item?
We have one hand, Mayor, uh, Chris McAllister. And Chris, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Chris McAllister and I reside in Ward Three off of 12th Street. I just want to thank everybody who helped go through the, uh, process for making the ordinances that allowed us to receive these dollars through our ability to have markets that utilize the, uh, sales of, uh, of vice as well as medicine in the state of Oregon. That said, a lot of these taxes and dollars were supposed to be served in a specific manner for persons who were affected by some of these items, whether it is the, uh, the, uh, ill who are having problems with substance use or whether it's people who are suffering, uh, the issues with, uh, alcohol. And so with that in mind, I really implore the city to look at ways to utilize the cannabis tax to help people who are sick or to help people who need extra help, to utilize the alcohol dollars, not just for, uh, what we have been using for, but to help our unhoused who are suffering from alcohol and other vice needs. We really need to clue in and utilize these dollars to help get it past these, uh, 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 social ills as opposed to just profiting off of them as people go about their vice or go about their tax medicine use. I appreciate your time and your service and I yield to the public.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Neil, is there any more, uh, folks raising their hand?
Mayor, we have no other hands for this item.
I'm going to close the public hearing.
Make a motion that we adopt resolution number five.
Second.
Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
Aye.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Aye.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Five yeses, uh, the motion passes five yeses, zero nos and one absent. Next item, please.
The public hearing number four is the police levy ballot title resolution. Resolution number six, a resolution referring to the voters of the city, a ballot measure authorizing a five-year local operation levy for jail and police services in the amount of one dollar and forty cents per one thousand dollars assessed value beginning fiscal year twenty-two-three, twenty-two-four. Sam Kelly Quatroki is here for the staff report.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm, uh, back for the third of the final police only presentations. Uh, tonight I'm asking for adoption of the resolution, which will pass on this final ballot title, giving staff time to work within the, uh, state's election guidelines, get that sorted and filed away for the November eighth election. Uh, at the previous council session, you requested a time to review the ballot title, fine tune if you need be. Uh, and this would be an opportunity, uh, Christina Krav might need to pop up, um, if there are major revisions to make sure they meet, uh, legal muster. Uh, but otherwise I'm here for a resolution. Thank you.
Uh, Mary.
Uh, yes, I had a question. I'm looking at the, the exhibit A page one of one, the ballot title and, uh, uh, measure summary. That's listed. Now is that, is that where, is that, does that show us what will be public, public? The public, publication of it, um. I divided it out and I didn't know if it would be more worthwhile to have sixty-six cents a day or, or if the, if the, um, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars makes more sense. I don't, I didn't know. I just, I divided it out. Two thirty-eight by three sixty-five came up with sixty-six cents a day. I didn't know what would make more sense and I thought I'd just throw it out there because I really didn't have an opinion one way or the other. Otherwise, the rest of it looks, looks fine to me. And I understand that the, the caption is what, um, we were talking about before that made sure we had renewal in it. So, thank you.
Leonard.
Thanks, Sean. Um, yeah, I, I think Mary Lee's raising a good question and, um, anybody who's worked for a nonprofit knows that you split it up into as small a unit as you can to make it as palatable as possible. Like you, for the, for the price of a cup of coffee, you can, um, do whatever it is that you're asking people to do. I, I would not be against sixty-six cents a day, but I would definitely like to have the two hundred and thirty-eight dollars in there somewhere. That's, uh, my two cents.
All right. Thank you. Um, I don't know how much space we have. Did we use all the words?
Uh, a hundred and seventy-three of a hundred and seventy-five, so it's tight. I will say the annual amount is electrically used by our ballot measures. That was more of just the historical formatting. Um, sixty-six cents a day might fit in there, might be a word over, but we could, uh, we could massage it if we needed to.
All right, uh, Christina.
Um, taxes are billed and paid on an annual basis. And so it's more, um, accurate in terms of how taxes are paid to state the annual, um, payment rather. I would be concerned about misrepresenting that taxes are paid daily, um, or that the charge would be daily if we provided a daily rate. I have not seen that done in the past.
Yeah, uh, my, my sense is that we should, that, that traditionally these levies are talking in annual terms and that we should keep that, uh, keep that language in. Leonard.
Just what I was about to say. Thanks.
Mary Lee.
Uh, just one question since we're, since we're, since we're talking about this, then if we're out there discussing the levy though, we can talk about that sixty cents sent today. Is that correct?
The city attorneys are not in their head.
Okay, that's all I want to know.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else before I open the public hearing? All right. I'm going to open the public hearing. I don't have any cards for this item. Uh, do I have any hands online?
Yes, Mayor, one hand, and that's Chris McAllister. And Chris, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Wadadi, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Chris McAllister. I still live in, uh, Ward Three on, uh, 12th Street. I am, uh, coming before you today to speak regards to this levy. A while ago, we had a contract with ICE that allowed us to bring in dollars to help support local services. When we went back and forth as a community about whether or not we wanted ICE, uh, being a means for us to fund our jails and our other spots, we looked at other ways that we could supplement these funds from government grants to levies to, uh, other community partnerships. During the discussion about ICE, we talked about ways that we could help end crime with through, uh, reduction of recidivism uh, and also being able to reunite families who may have been torn apart due to poverty, substance use and those items. I asked that as we go after this levy, that we match dollars for, uh, items that are about restorative justice, about helping victims heal and helping the people who may have made bad mistakes in their past step forward. A lot of the people that goes through our jails are people who have been picked up on our streets because there's no social place for them to be. It's too far to walk with a wheelchair to the mission to be there at eight o'clock in the morning to go for a bed. We really need to look at our community from a holistic sense, be able to invite case managers and outreach workers into our jails if you have people locked away for trespassing due to homelessness. If we have people who have made that last mistake and want to try and be clean, we need places for them to be and to be dis- uh, discharged to, not at two in the morning, but at a reasonable hour into a community that's really ready to welcome them, bring them in. Our people, our problems. If you're going to raise this levy, please raise the level of care and compassion. I yield. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Is anybody else raising their hand?
Uh, no other hands on this item here.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing.
I will make a motion that we adopt resolution number six.
Second.
Well, hang on.
Sorry, I'm just pausing for a second. I, I just, I want to get, um, if Nathan is online, um, and, and also Sam, I'm just now noticing that the, um, total estimated cost over five years does not include the three percent increase in assessed value that is typical. Um, and I went back to the twenty-twenty fire levy and the five-year estimate. Um, and that levy did include the assumed three percent increase per year in home assessed value. Um, and it appears that this was just taken the first year and multiplied by five. So I wanted to confirm that with Sam. Um, I did some quick math and it appears that, uh, twelve hundred and sixty-three dollars is what I would am calculating, but I would like to, um, I, I'm, would like the council to consider, uh, I wouldn't send away in, but I would like the council to consider, um, adopting the resolution with, uh, modification to, uh, update that number to reflect a three percent increase per year if Sam agrees.
Sam.
You were pointing out the one thousand one hundred and ninety dollars over five years. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I think you're correct. I might, that, that might have missed three percent of the, of the increase. So thank you for that.
So we're saying the new number is twelve sixty-three?
Um, or whichever number corresponds to, um, a three percent, the standard three percent increase per year. I would prefer to have finance check the math rather than having the city attorney's office to the, do their required math, although I do have an engineering degree. It was not a requisite for this position.
Nate.
I will work with Sam, uh, to check the math and, and get it corrected.
Um, so can we form it with, without the number, like as in, uh, adopt it with the corrected amount?
Yes, I think if you include that in your res, in your motion, then the resolution includes language directing, um, a, a number of city officers to make the changes needed to get this published.
You want to give me some language for that?
You can move to adopt, move to adopt.
Really screwed that up.
Yes, I'm sorry. Will you move to adopt the resolution with a correction to the total estimated, to the five-year cost to reflect a three percent increase?
Make a motion, make a motion that we adopt resolution number six with.
A three percent cost increase per year.
Three percent cost increase each year.
Now I will second that.
All right. All right. Now I think we're ready to vote. Neil, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
Aye.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Aye.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Motion passes five yeses, zero nos, uh, one absent. Next item, please.
Next item is business from the audience.
Um, while people online are queuing up, I have one card in the building. It is from Raymond Miller. If you can come up, Raymond. Could you state your name and general location for the record, please?
Uh, Raymond J. Miller. Um, I live on Oregon Avenue, Springfield.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, what I'd like to talk about is the, the safety corridor itself and what I actually do for a living. Um, I work for an L T L care, which is less than a truckload. Okay, we do deliveries in pretty much everywhere, all the different mills, um, you name it in this area. I've also started out at Levitt's Freight Service. So I've, I've dragged poles as long as a hundred feet long down the road. So I've been doing this for a long time. Roundabouts do not work. And the reason why I say that you can put as many signs as you want up that show you do not pass a truck in the roundabout, they do it anyway. We, we can't fix stupid. People are going to do stupid things and they're going to get hurt. We've put a ton of money into different places for people to walk across the street instead of jaywalk. And I see people jaywalk every day. They'll jump out of an LTD bus, go right behind it and they'll walk. We've had a lot of people killed that way. But again, I don't think I should have to give up my freedom of movement, just running around in my P O V for somebody else's safety. The truck routes that we have now need to be established and kept that way. We need not build any roundabouts at all on any one of these truck routes. You have trucks as long as a hundred and five feet. It's got over nine to ten feet of, of off tracking, which is where the trailer goes. When I go around the roundabout down here and, uh, oh, uh, Glenwood, thank you, sir. The double is just almost impossible with fifty-three footer. If I'm going to Nine Wood and I'm coming off the, uh, freeway, I have to go down Franklin so I can do an automatic feed. When I leave, I have to go down Main Street and take Pioneer because my rig just doesn't have enough room. Another thing that folks here in Springfield and in Oregon should realize, about twenty-five percent of the people that are out driving commercial trucks right now, English is not their first language. It's their second. Most cannot read. And I don't even understand it. If you read the, the manual, uh, to become a commercial truck driver, you need to read and write the English language, but we are bypassing that because we don't have enough trucks. So I guess my whole thing is you're making my job really, really difficult. And I go not only to just businesses, but I actually make deliveries to residential. So I go into different areas that most people probably wouldn't in a commercial rig. The longest trailer I usually have on that is forty feet. The shortest is twenty-eight. So I'm just going to keep running over signs and I'm going to keep running over concrete. I yield.
Thank you. I do not have any more cards. Um, are there hands being raised?
Yes, we currently have one hand and that is Chris McAllister. And Chris, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Ladati. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Chris McAllister. I live in Ward Three off of 12th Street. I'd like to acknowledge that as volunteers, that y'all carry a heavy lift, that you serve our community through rules and regulations and also through your personal driven goals to try and make this community better. I'd like to recognize personally, Counselor Stare and Counselor Mo, who know the names of some of our fallen and some of our living who are in desperation. I'd like to thank the counselors who have been part of the local nonprofits. I'd like to thank the counselors who have been part of the local nonprofits fundraising and supporting these efforts through and through as we try and gain weight. I really want to ask the new coming counselors and, and council to look at what are we going to be doing over the next few years as we address not just housing, but people who don't get into the housing for whatever reason, whether the house is not built to meet standards and thus does not qualify for a voucher, or whether the property is in a more lucrative spot and so business will take the house even though it's built as a house. We have a lot of options that we could do, but people don't know what Springfield wants to do. I appreciate Mr. Mayor's participation in regional outfits, but it's not enough for our community. We are losing to Springfielders, to Springfielders, to every other uh big city in our, or in our area because of the fact that our people are displaced and have to go to other cities to get basic services. We have camps entirely of Springfielders in other communities because we don't take care of our own outside of a couple projects that are really hard to get people into. So I really ask, as we look at the gem of Springfield, Glenwood, I hope that we have representation that looks in solutions like Steve Mo and Leonard Stare have in those areas to try and resolve them, to help play people like Mr. Guthrie and Mr. Lynch have futures in neighborhoods that they've paid time, blood, sweat, and tears for, but not have it be a Band-Aid and swept off to the county seat. I have grave concerns about what our incoming county commissioner has said is the Springfield way of dealing with our unhoused. Because I'm burying too many of our people waiting for Springfield to find out what its way is. We are very appreciative for every effort that y'all do that brings us closer to a wholesome, holistic integration of all of our peoples, brown, white, black, Spanish-speaking, English-speaking, Hindi-speaking. We are Springfield and we deserve to be all considered, and we need to have more than just the loud be heard. I know I've spoken several times in these hearings and there is a theme, there's a theme of compassion and of accountability. I believe in y'all and I hope you believe in all of Springfield because we can't wait any longer for people to be helped. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. The next speaker is SJ Lor. SJ, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
SJ, we, we can't hear you yet. I don't know if you're speaking. No, we, we still can't, we, we still can't hear you. So, wait, you might have just been there. You're, you're muted again, so um if you could try to unmute, we might have just heard you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can.
Awesome, thank you. Sorry, I'm connected to a new speaker tonight, so we're working things out here. I appreciate everyone um that has spoken already, and I just kinda have a question slash please correct me with the correct information kinda thing going on this evening. Um, I would just like to throw out there that there should absolutely be term limits to the time allotted to sit on the city council. If there is um laws in place that have a time limit, I'd love to be made aware of those because I can't seem to find that information online. And if it is not something that is in place, I think that it is extremely beneficial.
SJ, I think we lost you again. And you're, you're currently muted. We're gonna sort of up.
Can you guys hear me?
You are back.
All right, what was the last thing you heard?
Uh, that you wanted us to look at term limits.
Yes, um, because as a community member, I understand that you know, there are certain reasons for change and there's time for change. And time, you know, is a tricky subject, and um it would be extremely beneficial if there were ta- term limits for the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, SJ.
We have no other hands under business from the audience.
Is there any council response? Leonard?
Great, thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd like to thank Chris McAllister and Raymond Miller and Ed Lor for their comments. Chris, in uh, in your case, I, I think your comments dovetail in an interesting way. The, the fact is that we are treating um drug and alcohol and mental health problems the same way we are treating um homelessness. And that is emphasizing punishment instead of rehabilitation or helping people get off the streets. Um, if we could decriminalize homelessness, then that would go a long way, I think, toward financing the projects that you were talking about. Um, Ray Miller, I, I was a truck driver for twenty years. Um, I know exactly what you're going through. I um had to negotiate roundabouts myself, um generally with doubles, which was a slightly lesser problem, but the same, the same set of problems. And one of the things that I'm trying to do, uh, and I understand it would have to be done at the state level, is take through trucks completely off of Main Street. Um, but I know that you're in, um, I think Ward Four, and that would not, um, that would necessarily, that would not necessarily mitigate your problem, but I think it might mitigate some of the safety problems that you were talking about. Um, SJ Lor, I don't know if we have any, um, i- if we have any term limits right now. I, uh, the, the way I see it, and you know, and I'm saying this as a counselor, so take it with a grain of salt. Um, I, I think the main problem in getting younger people to run for office is in possibly compensating the counselors. Um, there is, you know, there, I know there was an ordinance, a proposed, um, a proposed stipend for the, uh, for the counselors a number of years ago, and it went down. Um, I think that that's gonna be a good first step toward um engagement of a younger generation. And um I appreciate all of you speaking up tonight. Thanks.
Merrily.
Um, yes, I I just wanted to speak up and say that when the council asks for information or follow-up information, it would be really appreciated if that information came through, um, because we would be more able to help with some of these things that have been brought up. Um, I have in the past asked for follow-up information, follow-up contact, and have not received it, which is one reason why I'm making the comment. I'm not gonna be around much longer, but it will be certainly be helpful for people following me and for the rest of the council if when you ask for information, that it's provided so that then the council can follow up with some of the suggestions and ideas that have been made. Thank you.
Cory?
Thank you. Um, and I, I wanna thank everyone for coming and um sharing your comments tonight, and I appreciate it. And I appreciate the diversity of, of comments that folks had to, to bring forward. And I just wanted to mention um that um Counselor Stare is right and sort of the tip of the iceberg of how do we open this conversation as a community to make sure that we have diverse representation in our elected officials? And it's right that the, there's no compensation and the amount of time that it takes and what it takes for folks to run, and all of those things are real. Um, and I think we haven't really dug into that conversation as a community. We're even having a challenge having that conversation as a state in terms of like, what does that look like for someone to take time out to do this? Um, so I think I just wanted to add on to that.
Damian?
Yeah, so thank everybody for coming, and I, I would like to say as one that, when the newer counselors and the one who's gonna serve at least my other time, I mean, I, so I've been doing a lot of stuff even before I was on council, so me being on council hasn't made me i- it hasn't really changed who I was as a person, and as somebody who's midway in their career uh, as well as somebody who's very engaged in a very small demographic, AKA the black community in the state of Oregon, period. Uh, sometimes holding these positions aren't really conducive to uh having any type of self-care. And so when I've spoken to people about, you know, getting involved in all that stuff, I mean, i- it's hard, especially for, I mean, I've, I've lived here five and a half years, you know, it's hard to see Oregon as my long-term place. And so I think a lot of people are like, well, this ain't my hood, why should I get involved? But then they're also trying to focus on that self-care. And so while I agree with everything you said, I would ask everybody who's listening to think about how can we create community? We talk about housing, so much housing, but guess what? Housing is just a place to live and sleep if there's nothing done to create actual community. And so if we want different types, you know, uh, we want some type of diversion, not just racially, uh, but age-wise, career-wise, we need to figure out a, a, a reason why people would wanna stay here in Springfield. Because let me tell you, it's not necessarily that easy. So I mean, I challenge you, I challenge myself, I challenge everybody to think about, heck, we honestly create a community uh that's gonna want people to engage uh or not burn out certain people so much that when they're off, they can't even think about being in a meeting for two or three hours. So that's my challenge to everybody.
All right, thank you. Um, I've got just a couple of comments. I, I wanted to note for Leonard, since he's not in the room, um, that the staff was out with Mr. Miller, just trying to get a little bit of additional contact information because I think he's got some um interesting insight for, from, from a tracking perspective. Uh, for, for Chris, um, I know you've brought up sort of drug treatment, mental health for a, for a long time. And I just wanna flag for you that the council is having a work session in the fall related to um a potential substance abuse court in the legal system. And we're getting initial information about it, what it might look like, what it might, uh, what it might do. Um, but it, it, it's at least the start of a conversation as well as the significant amount of money we spent this sort of spring turn, uh, spring session programming for different, um, for different needs in the community that ranged all the way from housing to uh the Egan Warming Center. So I think it's worthwhile to note that while we still have a significant problem, that the council is, you know, is looking for different places to sort of respond in a way that, in, in a way that, that makes sense and continues to move the needle on wi- with, with the community. And I know that you will be involved um and give us plenty of input when it comes to the fall. When we have that work session. Lastly, um, I think that, you know, there's an interesting question all the way about how do we continue to get more people involved in, in um councils, boards, commissions? Um, it is very, very common for fo- for me to get a question from people that are interested in running. And I would just encourage people that are interested in running to run, but more importantly, um, get on boards and commissions, right? Like one of the single best thing you can do right now for your experience and to start to, to, to start to build a path towards someday running for city council, even if you don't think that you wanna run, you know, until ten years from now, is to seek out a board and commission so that you can get exposed to issues that you're interested in. Or even if you don't wanna run for council, you know, getting involved on local boards and commissions is a huge value to the, to the community. And that goes for all the Team Springfield partners, but I appreciate everybody that's testified. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is business from the city council. Uh, one item, a presiding judge employment agreement amendment. And Nathan Bell is here for the staff report.
And then Counselor Woodrow, you raised your hand. Did you have a question before I started? You're on mute.
I, I was, I had a thing for business from city council, but go ahead, I'll go after your, I'll go after you.
Okay, uh, good evening again, uh, mayor and council. Um, this item in front of you this evening is a, a request for a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a uh employment agreement amendment uh for James Tierney, uh, our city, uh, presiding judge. A little bit of background on this, um, when we uh recruited for this position last year, there was a recognition that having this position in the city's comp plan would be a benefit, uh, not just for the recruitment and retention, uh, but also for administrative efficiencies. Uh, due to the expedited process at that time, we didn't have time to work with our comp consultant to determine where it would go. We had a good idea, but we didn't know for certain. Um, now we've had that opportunity and determined that it would go on to the uh E ninety-one pay band, uh, similar to our city uh attorney in terms of education and experience requirements. Uh, and so this uh amendment is just adding language that moves uh the presiding judge onto a pay band. Uh, when we negotiated the salary, we aligned it with the pay uh band, uh, so this won't result in a pay increase. They just slide right over into the same pay. However, uh, their one-year anniversary comes up in August, and similar to other employees, they will move on to the next step of the pay ban at that time. Uh, any questions for me?
Uh, I think Merrily's got, no, that is other business from the, from the council. All right, I, I don't see any other questions. Um, Steve?
I make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign an employment agreement amendment with James Tierney for the position of municipal court presiding judge.
Second.
All right, Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
Aye.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Radley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Aye.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Motion passes, five yeses, zero nos, and one absent. Next item, please.
Any business from the city council?
Merrily?
Yes, um, I just wanted to commend the Springfield Police Department for their canine tournament uh on Saturday. The silky field stands were probably full to eighty percent pe- capacity. Um, it was a great crowd, it was a great set of trials. We had twelve different uh officers and canine officers involved. Um, the weather cooperated, we only had some little bit of sprinkling in the beginning, and then the skies opened up with a little bit of sun. And, and um, so it was, it was great. I think the public enjoyed being back after three years um, and having an opportunity to see the dogs and the officers. I know I saw, I saw quite a crowd go down onto the field afterwards to meet the various officers and canines. And um, as far as I could tell, everybody had a great time, and it was really, it was very well done, and it was nice to be back after three years. And I just wanted to commend the police department and the canine unit, um, officers and dogs for a great, a great event.
All right, anybody else? I will just note that you, we, we did go. It was a great event, too. Um, for the last three days, my twins have been rus- running around the house with um taking stuffed dogs through different uh obstacle courses and then timing their uh, timing their accomplishments. So I thank the, the police for that. Next item, please.
Uh, next item is business from the city manager. Item one, fiscal year twenty twenty-three Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Annual Action Plan. Aaron Feifield is here for the staff report.
Good evening, mayor, council. I'm here tonight uh seeking your approval for an updated fiscal year twenty twenty-three Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan as well as authorization uh to negotiate and sign the relevant grant agreements. As you recall, community development block grant funds are funds the city receives annually from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, primarily to support low-income residents in Springfield through a variety of strategies. This plan to, came to you last during the May twenty-third work session. Staff presented the Community Development Advisory Committee's recommendation for funding, including support for homeownership assistance, low income, the Low Income Home Repair Program, partnership with Lane County for Human Services, land acquisition for housing, and the community project requests to assist uh St. Vincent de Paul's Roof Replacement Project for an affordable housing development, as well as support for a tree planting pilot project in low-income neighborhoods. During that work session, council gave support for each of these strategies, and I thought we were ready to move forward. Surprise, um, there was an additional request that came in after that work session. That request is in your packet. It's from Catholic Community Services of Lane County. Um, they went ahead and looked at their budget um for the Oasis addition and came in with an additional, additional request for community development block grant funds um for that addition. As you recall, last year, uh, see Catholic Community Services proposed constructing an addition to their service center that would create a permanent home for their Oasis, um, a day center for the Oasis program. So supporting unhoused families with children. Um, at the time, council awarded uh that project three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in CDBG funds. Um, staff have worked with Catholic Community Services for the last year on that project, and for various um, reasons, we've been trying to get that project moved forward, but as we're just about ready to go, we went ahead and looked at the budget again, and it's increased about a hundred and fifty, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. we went ahead and looked at the budget again, and it's increased about a hundred and fifty, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And so you'll see that request from Catholic Community Services is to bridge that gap while also putting additional funds of their own into the project. So given council support for this project previously, the advisory committee went ahead and held a public hearing on June eighth and discussed this project and ultimately decided that they wanted to amend their allocation recommendation to council to fully support the gap. I think part of the consideration there is that there are non-federal fund, or non-C D B G funds, namely ARPA funds, that are tied, that the city can use for affordable housing specifically for land acquisition. And so the C D A C, the advisory committee felt if they were to reduce the line item in the C D B G funds for land acquisition by the amount that's, that Catholic Community Services was requesting, there are additional funds that we could still support that effort, and that wouldn't be lost. So you'll see that amended recommendation from the C D A C in your packet in attachment four. I can answer any and all questions.
Are there any questions? Damian?
Hi, uh, going back to the tree piece, do, do we ever find out what type of trees they were? And if they would, would add pollen to the air, make people suffer even more?
Damian, I asked this question, but I think I asked it late when someone was on vacation, and everyone's like, oh, that's a great question. And I, I, it is. So I, people are aware and everyone is agreeing, like, oh, gosh, I hope not. So I will flag that again to make sure that, like, the non-pollin-creating trees are perhaps preferred. Sorry about that.
All right, any other questions? All right.
See two motions here. Do we do one then the other, or how do we do that? Okay, and the first motion, to approve the Community Development Advisory Committee's updated recommendation for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three Community, Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in seconded. Could we call the vote, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
Aye.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Radley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Aye.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Motion passes, five yeses, zero nos, one absent.
Now, I want to make the second motion. Authorize the city manager to negotiate and sign agreements with Saint Vincent de Paul of Lane County and Catholic Community Services of Lane County for their C D B G awards.
Second.
All right, Neil, could you call the vote?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
Aye.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Radley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Aye.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary.
All right, motion passes, five yeses, zero nos, one absent. All right, thanks, Aaron. Next item, please.
Any other business from the city manager?
Just a couple of quick things. One, I just wanted to make a comment to Counselor Pitts. I one hundred percent support your, your quest to reduce the pollen load in the air, and my allergies have been horrible this year. And I don't know what to do short of walking around in scuba gear. So we will definitely make sure that we are not increasing that pollen load, which seems to say hi every day, irrespective of what day that is. Also, Counselor Woodrow, I wanted to thank you, Mayor Van Gordon, Counselor Pictionary, for showing up for the canine competition. I was there, I had a great time, it was wonderful to see so many members of our community. It's a wonderful event, it's free, a great thing to take your kids to. I was, I wanted to take my dog so he could see other dogs being obedient. Did not do that. I will say, you know, it, I was really struck with how well those canines are trained and, and just there's the recall and the way that they're able to scent track. That takes a lot of dedication and training by the canine officers and their handlers. So just really appreciate the camaraderie with the community and the support of our police department. That's all I have.
All right, Neil, next item, please.
Next item is business from the city attorney. Item number one, authorize appeal of state land use planning rules, and Christina Kraz is here for the staff report.
Thank you, mayor. I am before you tonight to request that council authorize the city attorney to retain special legal counsel for the purpose of filing an appeal to Oregon administrative rules that are expected to be adopted by the Land Conservation and Development Commission, called L C D C, at their meeting on July twenty-first later this summer. These proposed rules would amend Oregon administrative rules that place requirements on the city for housing, for planning around housing, transportation, and then regional scenario planning in conjunction with Lane County and Eugene. We are requesting to request legal review of these rules by the Oregon Court of Appeals. The city of Springfield has been engaged in providing substantial comments to L C D C and to their department staff regarding the city's concerns and issues with these proposed rules. But we have been unsuccessful in seeking resolution of these concerns to date. The rules are often referred to as the climate-friendly and equitable communities rules. And I note that we have not objected to the purpose of the rules or the overall objective of the rules, but rather the high level of prescriptive detail in the rules and the fact that the flexibility that they're trying to provide to local governments is simply not going to work for the city of Springfield to achieve our local priorities. And so I'll take any questions, other, otherwise I would ask you to authorize retention of special legal counsel in the event that permanent rules are adopted.
Merrily.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you for all the information you provided with this. I read through the, the letter and, and read all the different parts and appreciated having that information. And, and behind this, a hundred percent, I, I think it's really important to, to go forward with this and, and, and stand up for ourselves. Because basically that's what we're doing, is just standing up for ourselves and saying, hey, you know, we necessarily, we might agree with you ideologically, but we need to be able to do it on a practical level. So I, I thank you for all the information, I appreciated having it.
Corey, did you, okay, Leonard?
Thanks, mayor. I, I wanted to ask Attorney Kraz if there was any kind of further communication with other cities in the meantime. Have we, have we gotten any kind of a, an idea of a motion or a, a, an action that another city is taking right?
Counselor Stare, the rules have yet to be adopted yet, and the Springfield City Council takes its summer recess earlier than other city councils. So I expect that there will be decision points coming before other local governments. However, I do not believe any of those conversations have yet taken place or decisions made on the part of other local governments due to the timing of the rules not yet being adopted and the, the Springfield City Council's summer recess starting a bit earlier than others.
Understood. I just wanted to explain to people who had not attended the previous discussion, which I actually, I guess they couldn't have, that I, that my objection has to do with the fact that Springfield might be going it alone on this. And on that, on those grounds, I'm, I'm going to be voting against this right now.
And I, and, and I think Leonard, I don't think we're going to end up going alone up with this. The, the letter from L O C from the mayors, I believe, had either twenty-seven or thirty mayors on there that were expressing the same position. Now, obviously, we don't know what the other cities are going to actually do, but there's similar sentiment through a variety of cities that are out there. We just have, we just happen to be moving first on this. Any other questions? Steve?
I've been following this with great interest when I first saw the list come out of the governor's office. Land use planning rules mandated. And, and they're not going to the legislator, legislation. It's going to be laid right on the cities, all the cities, the whole state. It's going to be a mess, it's going to be expensive, and we're getting out and fighting ahead, and I'm glad we're doing that.
And I think there's one other comment to, to, to make about it. Is really our, our letter outlines, you know, significant areas of concern. And we're in our going position as we continue to ask them to address them. They, they are not there that yet, it's just, this thing's going to take more time, and we hope that they take it. Any other questions? All right, Steve?
Motion. Okay, a motion to au- okay, motion to authorize a city attorney to retain special legal counsel for the purpose of filing an appeal of Oregon administrative rules expected to be adopted by the Land Conservation Development Commission, L C D C, at their meeting on July twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, amending O R Chapter six-six-zero, Divisions eight, twelve, and forty-four.
Second.
Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
Aye.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Radley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
No.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary.
The motion passes, four yeses, one no, and then one absent. Next item, please.
Uh, next item is alternate, alternative review of the Main Street Safety Project. This is resolution number seven, a resolution providing an alternative review process for the Main Street Safety Project as permitted in Springfield Development Code for Metro Plan Amendments. Christina Kraz is here for the staff report.
Thank you again, mayor and council. This resolution before you tonight is a mechanism procedurally to document the council's desire to not proceed to public hearing on the version of the Main Street Facility Plan that was presented to the Planning Commission and recommended by them for city council approval. The Springfield Development Code and the Metro Plan, which is the overall regional framework plan for Eugene-Springfield metropolitan area, has certain procedures required to make amendments to that plan, including the applicable to the Main Street Facility Plan. This is a procedural step that allows the city council to take a step back from the Planning Commission recommendation, develop a council alternative to the plan, and then move forward to public hearing with that version without either having to have a city council hearing on the Planning Commission's recommended version, and also without having to send the council's alternative back to the Planning Commission. The resolution also includes direction to the Committee for Citizen Involvement, which is the Springfield Planning Commission, acting in that role, to adopt a supplemental community engagement plan that will capture the input the council provided at work session earlier today, and then potentially in the fall, any additional work, any additional guidance the council might provide or the governance team might provide. And that is to meet our requirements under statewide planning goal one for community involvement in planning decisions.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Merrily?
Not necessarily, well, I guess there is a question. Basically, what we're doing is we're putting up a stoplight to what was recommended from the Planning Commission, is that correct? And then rather than having to go in a back-and-forth process of we recommend this, go back and, and back between Planning Commission and Council, we are basically starting at this point to create an alternative plan. Is that, it's, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, Counselor Woodrow, you're essentially not moving forward, putting up a stoplight and not moving forward on the Main Street Facility Plan document, but you are not throwing out the entire record of the work that has been done so that you can continue to build on or supplement or change or add to information that's, or outreach that's already been done. People that have participated in the project in front of the Planning Commission or in front of the city council would remain participants, withstanding to engage later on in the process, as well as new interested parties that may come in and participate in the process as well.
So this is going to give us an opportunity, then. I know there were, I know for me, there were parts of the plan that I didn't necessarily thought lined up with each other. And this is going to give us an opportunity to dig into that and, and create the clarity that's necessary as we develop an alternate plan. Is that correct?
That's correct. Instead of taking the facility plan document the Planning Commission recommended and then making amendments or tweaks to that, you would start from a blank slate or a clean slate and build the elements the council would like to propose for future public hearing. And then you would take feedback on that and make further adjustments as you'd like.
Thank you.
Other questions? Steve?
Okay, I make a motion that we adopt resolution number seven.
Second.
Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
Aye.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Radley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Aye.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary.
The motion passes, five yeses, zero nos, and one absent. Next item, please.
Any additional business from the city attorney?
Do have one additional bit of business I'd like to do in introduction tonight. We have our legal extern named Sam Hamowitz, he's in the audience. And I just wanted to take an opportunity to introduce him to the community, into the council. Sam's a law student at the University of Oregon. He has a background in education and is originally from Texas. And, you know, COVID sort of put a stop temporarily for us having externs, but it is really great for our office to have legal externs, they bring a lot of fresh energy. And we always learn more from them, I think, than they learn from us. So anyway, Sam is here in the audience tonight, and I just wanted an opportunity for him to see a council meeting, and he'll be with us through the summer. So anyway, Sam Hamowitz, and this is the council and the community.
Welcome, Sam.
Hi, Sam. All right, thank you. That looks like all our business this evening. We are adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.